Treasurer. In the proposed 2021 budget is $100,000 for animal control and two full-time animal control positions. And that's $75,000 in two animal control positions more than we had before. So that's a good start if we can get that, plus your help and. Just want you to know, we don't take for granted all that you've done. Here, especially after we went through this. So. For us, that's a solid start and $100,000 goes a lot further here than it does in other parts of the country, I might add.
That's wonderful.
We got $100,000 in the budget for this dog.
Yes, sir.
What page is that on, Mr. Mayor?
I'm going to defer to Mr. Turner. I know what I'm still.
Go ahead. Budget, Mr. Turner?
She'd probably be on page. Three. Page. Four or five. I don't have it in front of me. I haven't opened it up yet. Should be on page four or five. It's right after.
Yeah, it's actually at the top of page four. Should be. And then the positions are on the. 2021. Well. Probably should say 22, I think, but projected salaries, wages, fringe benefits, addendum to the budget, and that is. On page two. At the top. Of the. Sal- of the salaries.
You say on page 22, you said?
Now, page two, there, there are actually two documents right there. One is the budget and one is. Proposed salaries, wages, and fringe benefits. It breaks down the salary portion of the budget. Tell me if I'm wrong. Tell me.
I'm trying to, okay, uh, yeah, the, the budget. Is at the top of, is. At the top of page six. And the. Salaries and wages. Are. In the addendum to the budget. Where it says 2021 projected salaries, it should be like the mayor says, she'll say 2022 projected bud. Projected salaries and that should be on page. Two.
Two of them.
Yeah.
That would be at the back of your budget though. Probably. Hi, Derek, the. The salaries. The budget. And I know we might be working on two different pages or documents, but.
I, I, I don't find it in my budget.
Well, you look, okay, you look at the top of page six.
Top of page six.
Yes.
Under what?
That's the, that's the, because the bottom, okay, the heading is at the bottom of page five. It says at the bottom of page five, it says animal control.
On page five, animal control.
Yeah, so the numbers start on page six.
Okay.
So that's.
Okay, yeah, I'll say animal control salaries.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's the salary.
If you want to see the breakout of the salaries, you go to the back where you see the salaries and wages, the addendum in the back. The breakout will be on page two of the addendum.
Page two of it, okay, okay, I'm headed there now.
Hey, Derek, while he's doing that, look at the top of page four. Statement of revenue, the general fund budget. Every expenses, there's an animal control box, one item there. But the one I say now, I may have the wrong document.
Yeah, that's the revenue. That you, that you said that you would be able to get. It was, uh, it was 25,000 last year and we added an additional 100,000. So those are the revenues.
What page would the 100,000 be on?
What do you mean?
It would be spread.
Different pages.
The top of page four are the revenues. That's just. Deadline items to revenue. What, 125, because it was 25 last year. And you said that you could get the 100,000. Additional. And so that's one of those revenues, 125,000.
And then in addition to that, we have the two full-time employee positions, right?
Yeah.
Proposed.
About to be. About 69,000, a little over $69,000.
All right, well, listen, we're, uh, we want to be respectful of everybody's time and, uh. So I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting at work, uh, January 18th, 2022. It's a budget workshop. It's not a called city council meeting. That's really important for a lot of legal reasons because we're on exclusively on Zoom. Um, so we won't be taking any legal actions tonight, uh, but. For the most part, we usually never do in budget workshops. We have until the end of January, approve a budget for 2022. And, um. So we're basically reviewing these items of the budget, taking questions and so forth and, uh. And then at the end of January, we will have to have an in-person meeting or a meeting that meets the requirements of. The law and then we'll adopt the budget for 22. And so having said that, I want to welcome, um. KJIW. I can't tell everybody who's on the call, so I apologize, but if the. Hello West Hall, Daddy World, World is on, we want to recommend any other media. We want to welcome our guests who tuned into Zoom. And especially, and it's my honor to, uh, go ahead and introduce Kathy Bissell. Kathy Bissell is with the Bissell Animal Foundation and, um. She has been a huge partner with. Um, our city and our county, our community when it comes to animal problems and issues here. And it's been a, uh. Highlight of my life to get to know Kathy. She's, she's a real hero. Uh, across this country and we, um. We encourage you to go to the Bissell Foundation, uh, Facebook page, website and all those kind of things. Um, she, she really has, uh, been there for us and she doesn't have to be. She's all over the country, at least all over the country. And she understands our struggles better than most people, uh, even most people here. So. Without further ado, I've asked, invited Ms. Bissell to make a presentation for us tonight. And, uh, Ms. Bissell, again, thank you. I'm going to, we're going to turn it over to you so that you can, um. Show us. Do a slideshow and give us a presentation. Again, Ms. Bissell, thank you very much and welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate being here and being able to speak to everybody about your wonderful, uh, city. I have enjoyed multiple visits to Helena and, um, to the shelter when it was there, uh, trying to work my best to help with the animals there. Not only with, uh, the Delta, but there were other organizations. Some of the people are on the, on this, uh, Zoom now. Uh, that I've worked with as well, people who really care about animals, um, and want to make a difference and. Uh, you have a lot of great animals in your city and they just need to have support so they can. Be moved into other places or adopted out, whatever you feel, um. Needs to happen. I'm gonna, going to show you a little video of my, uh, one of my visits, uh, a year ago. Right now it was very cold. Um, I want to kind of show you what your shelter was like at the time that I got there. Um, I would suspect that most people don't even know, um, how the shelter was run. Um, there was a lot of good that was starting to happen and then it went bad pretty quickly. And I think, uh, you'll see. Uh, when we went, we went to help. Um, and, uh, let me just run this little video for you and then I can talk to, uh, what we did.
Yeah, um, I saw you switched the host to Kathy. If it could be switched to me so I could share the presentation, is that possible?
Kathy, Kathy will have to do that. She's the host now, sorry. Oh, shoot, I don't really know how to do that. Um. It, it can't.
It can't be switched to my name?
Um. Oh, look and see. I don't have that ability now. She's, since she's the host, I don't know how to take that back. Well, that's not going to work then. Um. Shoot. Screen share, uh, I just don't have the, I don't have it downloaded. It was, uh, meant to go to Eliza. Well, I can try for the situation, but it's unfortunate because we do have some great video, um, to show you about the shelter, but. A year ago, um, in January, early January, uh, I went into the shelter after being there multiple times. Uh, being told that it was very cold and many of the animals there, over 240 dogs. And cats did not have heat or warmth and were freezing. And that is obviously not okay. Um, people across the country now, animal rights are, are big and people don't like to hear about shelters getting so large. Um, that they can't take care of themselves. And that's exactly what ha- happened in the Delta. Um, these animals. Uh, were left outside. They didn't have proper heat. They didn't have enough money to fund. This many animals being run by a couple of women who had big hearts, but, but just could not make it happen for these animals. So I called in 16, um, shelters. Uh, to partner with me in your area and we went in and we took out all the dogs, every single dog except for. Uh, a few dogs that were, um, high risk. That they said they wanted to work with, but they were a little bit more on the dangerous side. Oh, here we go. Okay, great. So we'll run this little video and you'll, you'll get a sense of what it's about. If you go to view options and fit it to your screen. Um, you'll, you'll be able to see. Do we have sound, Eliza?
Yep, can you, can you hear?
No, I can't.
Me. See if that's something I can fix on my end.
Can anybody hear the, any sound or is it just me?
No, but that's okay. Take your time and get it right. Don't go.
All right, let me see. Did that change anything?
There it goes.
See, I were very close friends. For a long time. Can we just happen this back?
Nope. Unless it's not going.
Something happened, actual.
That better?
Yeah, we're not getting it fully.
It, it's not coming up still?
That place where she wasn't even working.
Just a second.
I think it might also be helpful if people on this call could mute themselves. Yeah, it allow for this to come through better.
Okay, I just muted a few people because I can do that now, so we can try this again.
We have spent the last three days here at the Humane Society of the Delta on our Support the Shelters Rescue Road trip. We decided Bissell Pet Foundation to come down here and help the Humane Society of the Delta save lives. It's not just us and we're small teams and we can fund, but we can't move. 16 shelters stepped up with us and make a difference and help so many animals. 240 dogs, 30 cats left this facility. I've always called ourselves the forgotten shelter because no one knew where to keep them. We never got help. And this amazing lady, Kathy Bissell, with the Bissell Foundation, has changed. 440 dogs lost. They all have a home, their own sofa, they're in a bed. It's been amazing, beyond belief, more than I could have ever dreamed would happen. Bissell Pet Foundation will not stop until every pet has a home.
So. This was a great call out and a great help, um, to move these animals out, these animals that were not going anywhere. Uh, we had worked all year to, um. To save lives for the Delta. And then this effort was huge because they continued to bring in more pets than they possibly could handle. Um, with that comes a lot of cost, uh, for the Bissell Pet Foundation. We granted the Humane Society of the Delta $89,491 to help these animals over the last year. It's a whole lot of money for one shelter and still the shelter continued to worsen because they continued to bring in. More animals and animals, all of a sudden after COVID, uh, the beginning of last summer. Stopped being adopted. People were going out instead of adopting animals. So across the country. There was a backlog of dogs and the Delta didn't stop. They just kept bringing in more dogs. From your community, but from outside the community as well. And some of the dogs were quite dangerous. Um, and they wanted to rehab them. It was just not going to be possible and not right for these animals. Um, I had to pay the Bissell Pet Foundation, I had to pay 152,237 dollars. To other, uh, partners to support the work of pulling these dogs out. So there's vaccines, there's health, there's behavior. There's a lot that goes into it and. We had over 33 shelter partners this last time, which was in October. And basically they said they will never come back and they will never help if this, they, you have some close shelters nearby. You have Nashville, you have Memphis, you have some really, really great organizations, big and small. Um, that would be willing to help a shelter like yours, but they're not going to help, um, if this happens again. Because it was, it was wrong. I feel a little guilty that I may have, uh, fueled the fire initially by funding. Um, but I, at the time felt like I was doing the right thing and, um, then it just plain and simply got out of control and the women. Were almost on the hoarding, um, level with just a lot, a lot of dogs, a lot of dogs not being cared for properly. And, um, numerous shelters that were pulling from them on a regular basis to help them out. All wrote letters to the mayor saying, we will never go back. This is horrific conditions. We care for the animals of Helena, but we will not be back. And once you have that problem, it becomes a nationwide conversation. So people want to see, um, Helena have a good, a good shelter that they can work with to move animals out. There are all sorts of people that would come back and help pull. The animals on a regular basis as long as the facility is up and running and running properly. Um, can we go to the next slide?
Sorry, it's taking away my permissions again. There we go.
Okay, so this was kind of the conditions as they were cleaning up. You can see the ceiling, the air quality for these animals. Some animals have lived in cages over a year, um, and they were deteriorating or deteriorated at that point. Okay, next, um. Just kennel after kennel. Of course, a lot of great, beautiful faces. Um, we spent a lot of money giving, um, microchips and vaccines. Uh, that care and support and, uh, paying for transport to get these animals out. And they were well-deserved animals. They, they really. Needed to find a home and we were happy to be able to help. Next slide. Just more faces, it just went on. So Nashville is a very trusted shelter partner near you with really great protocols. Um, they understand how a good shelter is to be run. Um, they had pulled, uh, to date Nashville Humane Association assisted 32 dogs from the Humane Society of the Delta. We have seen these dogs flourish and thrive once relocated to Nashville, but they did not arrive in that condition. These poor dogs came to us thin, flea-infested, covered in urine, scalding marks, et cetera. With basic care and love, these animals became adoptable dogs and found their loving forever homes. Um, so I, I wanted to just explain some of the shelters to you. Um. While we were there, the dogs, it was pretty horrific at night. Um, a lot of these, uh, more vicious dogs that were brought in because they didn't have proper. Um, kennels would get out and they would fight and I will show you some of those, uh, one picture. Um, it was very tough to pull five dogs off a dog or running, you know, towards a human. So the, the situation was, was bad and this is why the Delta needed to be shut down and. Why the women running the Delta really shouldn't have the opportunity to, um, to do this again. Um, the next slide, please. This is at night. Um, I took this video myself. It was terrible, but the shelter was also very much rat-infested. Uh, this was just one little picture I wanted to show you. Um, I think it's a video, right, Eliza? You could run.
Um, yes.
Okay, the, you can see at night. Now, if you can imagine. We were there working at night. Uh, the office was rat-infested. The buildings were rat-infested. The dog kennels were rat-infested. Um, I never really wanted to show anybody this picture, but it, it shows you what. You can't do again. Uh, what needs to happen is, um, for some. People to come in and run the shelter properly. And, um, unfortunately, this area is very infested. Um, and at this point, I don't know that you'd be able to start your shelter in the same place. It probably should be moved. I believe that. Um, you'd have to test the soil for contamination. Um, it, it was pretty contaminated and obviously rat-infested. These were some of the cats that came off a hoarding case. Uh, we gave quite a bit of money for that hoarding case, um, that the Delta took on in your community. Um, many of those cats were very, very sick and never after receiving money got any of the care that they needed. Um, a lot of cats died, um, and a lot of cats went on to wonderful organizations, uh, in your area. This one went to Memphis. The cats we took were all friendly and highly adoptable. It's heartbreaking that they had to live in those inhumane conditions. Bear rooms piled with urine and feces, no items of comfort, no places to hide or in cramped kennels. Next to barking dogs for so long. They had varying degrees of upper respiratory illness symptoms and body conditions ranging from very thin to obese. So it was, it was very tough. Some of the cats did not make it and some did once removed from the property. Next film. This was one of the dogs when we were there that was attacked. Just, this was during the day, um. And it was pretty sad to see. Luckily, we were able to, um. You know, grab him and pull the other dogs off. So the animals all arrived with dirty coats and small wounds all over their heads and feet. Most were around, um, VCS of 39 or, uh, or 49. This could have been easily avoided, treated with adequate animal husbandry. Four out of the nine dogs we received were heartworm positive. That's another thing. I, I know they tried to treat their heartworm dogs, but. When you have 240 dogs on a property, it's pretty impossible when you only have a few women. Uh, who really don't get in the kennels with the animals, um, to care for them. So. Uh, this is from, uh, central Arkansas. Um, we assisted with removal of 95 cats from the Humane Society of the Delta. All cats appear to have severe URIs with some needing possible eye removals and/or immediate vet care. Cats were caged and appeared to be in extremely poor health. Some of the cat's lungs were filled with fluid and showing pneumonia-like symptoms. Most of them were coughing, sneezing and very lethargic. Several cats had visible open wounds that also needed treatment. So. That was from central Arkansas. And, um. This is from my director, uh, who was on the ground. Uh, she had worked for 12 years for Humane Society of the US. She was very familiar with HSUS, I mean, with, uh, the Delta. And I have to say that, um, it was very difficult for me to get people to come into Helena, some of the bigger, better shelters because. They didn't want to deal with this condition. They felt it was a hoarding, uh, environment and they had tried at one point and after that they gave up and that's what happens when things aren't run well. People don't come back because the expense is big. In this case, the Bissell Pet Foundation paid a lot of money out to these shelters to, to take in these animals because they needed, uh, medical. And training behavior, that kind of thing. So this is from my director. On behalf of Bissell Pet Foundation, I directed the operations to remove all pets from the Humane Society of the Delta facility. From October 26th to, to the 29th, 2021. I have extensive experience in cruelty investigations and case execution. I participated in more than 40 cases involving law enforcement in my 12-year career in animal welfare, acting in capacity of incident command. And more than 20 of the cases ranging from puppy mills to hoarding neglect cases. Having been aware of the issues at the Humane Society of the Delta for several years, and this is when she was at HSUS. I was shocked at just how severe the conditions were in October of 2021. Long-term neglect was evident both physically and emotionally in dogs and cats. The majority of medical conditions were left untreated. Uh, creating long-term suffering and pain. The housing, um, the dogs and cats were living in was substandard, lacking adequate protection from the elements outside. And an extreme level of ammonia in the air from feces and urine inside. There were no pets on the property, unacceptable housing. Some of the pets had been there for numerous years, creating significant mental, um, deterioration. This was one of the worst cases I have experienced in my career as far as living conditions. The only comparison would be a puppy mill. Where profit is put before the welfare of the pets. Now, I don't think that the women intended to have it be this way, but when you have a mentality of collecting animals. Because you think you can care for them, all of a sudden it gets out of control. It's, it's a, becomes a hoarding situation. And unfortunately, um, I'm pleading with you to please set up something that will be great for your community. I'm willing to put some money in the pot to make it right, uh, to have, you know. To, you know, and to, to work with people to, uh, raise some funds to help you along with what you put in, but. Getting behind a great facility is really important. Um, today, just bringing in animals and euthanizing them, um, does not work. I will tell you that. Um, people are aware of the Humane Society and are, they're aware of what happened at the Humane Society in the Delta. And they are waiting to see results from your community, um, and how you are going to save the animals that are in your town. Um, I understand from people there that. There are a lot of dogs on the streets now. Um, puppies are being found in boxes. Um, it's just not right and I would love to see you guys. Create a facility that would be right for the people in your community that love pets. And that want them, you know, picked up, spayed, neutered, vaccinated and healthy and either staying in your community or moving on. Um, you have a beautiful community, like I said, um, and I'm willing to help in any way that I can. And I, I hope that gives you a little perspective on, uh. On my experience with what happened at the Delta.
Um, I want to make sure you can hear me. Can y'all hear me okay? Kathy, can you hear me?
Oh, yes, I'm so sorry, Kim. Yep.
And I, I just learned today. That since January the first, I think, uh, Liz the Galway, who is one of our local. Meals on Wheels for Hello West Hall, animal. Uh, organizations has picked up, I think she said 52 just since January. And then on, on top of that, we had some issues with, I mean, this has been going on for a long time. I'll, I'll just cut to the chase. When Kim, who is the executive director of the Bissell Foundation, right, Kathy, when she told me both on the phone and in person that in her long career in animal inhumane treatment of animals and abuse, she'd never seen anything this bad and she's been in other countries, not just our country. That really hit home and she's not a person given to overstatement. And it really needs to hit home for us. We had a problem twenty years ago that, or fifteen years ago or so, that made national news. We tried to address it then. Clearly, we've made news again and we've kind of come full circle. People see quality of life is the number one reason to live in a place now. And sensibilities about animal welfare have changed since, say, twenty years ago, thirty years ago. For one thing, and secondly, standards increased and it should be. But thirdly, and this is the kind of thing that I, I try to say as much as I possibly can, this is not just an animal program problem. This is a human problem. The fifty million dollars is being invested in bike trails in Phillips County by the Walton Foundation, State of Arkansas and others. I could flash on here a bike mark to my wife's cat who used to be a bike rider. She doesn't bike right now because she's so afraid of the dogs. Her best friend was attacked. Now, I could, I could keep you all night with the stories. We have the Tour de Delta, which is an event every year. Every, well, we didn't have it for two years. We had it this year and the year before the pandemic, both times in the same exact place. They were attacked by dogs. This is a human problem. We have not just people from out of town, not just my wife, but we have people attached here. I had a phone call from a father, the third phone call, by the way, about a dog, a bike, on his son a week ago. This is a real problem, a human problem. And according to the state and local law, we are required to do something by law. So when we talk about lawsuits and exposure to lawsuits and our responsibility to uphold the law, I can tell you as the mayor of this town, we are not doing, and we haven't done that for a long time. And yet we have a legal responsibility to do that and it wouldn't take much because we, to, to be sued and be held accountable for that. And we will be eventually, if not sooner, later. We're very fortunate that people like Kathy Bissell and the Bissell Foundation have such a passion that they've been willing to come in and help. They're not judging people. They're not wagging their finger at anybody. They're just trying to help. They also, she didn't even mention the spay and neuter clinic that was held at Walmart and I, I can't. Several hundred animals were spayed and neutered for free.
And may, may I speak to that a little bit, ma'am?
Sure.
Yes, we, we did set up at your Walmart spay and neuter clinic and it was very, very necessary. We had in two days, two hundred dogs and in the morning of the third morning, a hundred cats. And people were still wanting more spay neuter. We gave vouchers for them to go to the Wynn Clinic and didn't matter how many vouchers because many people had multiple do- dogs, you know, ten, twelve. And when you have people that have that many dogs in your community, they are gonna breed if they have not been spayed or neutered. So we were starting on a really great path to help your city, but our wonderful doctor was killed this summer. And he was very good at what he did. He did all those surgeries himself. So we haven't, we planned to come back and, and help and they were all free. And people were lined up at seven in the morning. We had miles long. And some people we had to turn away. And they still continued to drive an hour to the Wynn Clinic and take their pets there because it was worth it to them. So there's, there's need and want in the community. People want to do the right thing. Vet costs are expensive and being able to help them and you as a, a city to be able to help your people. That's, if you can help them with vaccines, they have healthier pets. There's not so much disease. We had a lot of distemper outbreaks this summer. If any, any of you've heard about distemper. It, it's a very deadly and horrific disease and many shelters across the country were very full and they had distemper. And that's, that could break out. So keeping pets in your community healthy is really important.
Kathy, again, don't go anywhere because we're gonna type questions. I just wanted to say, you know, again, thank you. And that's just sort of a status report. So at this point, if you're okay with it, we're gonna start, we're gonna see if we can take any questions from members of the council. For those who are logged on from the community, we, we don't type comments from the public at these events or council members or elected officials. Feel free to type anything you might on Zoom. But do any council members have any questions at this time from a specific? Mr. Joe, I think. I believe Mr. Ed is on.
I'm on. I, 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 I just don't know where to start. I, I, we definitely need to take care of this problem and I'm willing to do everything I can as a council member. We need to get the rest of the council involved in this thing and all be together on it. I see Don's with us here on the council tonight. I don't see any of the other council members present, Mr. Mayor. I don't know what the problem is, but this is a serious problem in our community. I was giving money to them and doing everything I can, I thought it was doing fine. I didn't go out there. I never went out there once or twice and I didn't realize. I'm eighty-three years old and I live with a German Shepherd. I've had that dog spayed it. I've been to school with that dog. She's very obedient and I've even taught the dog to understand Italian. I speak Italian as well as English. So I have a companion as well. And if, and if the people in this community will take care of their animals, we won't have a problem. I think that's where the biggest problem is, the people aren't looking after their animals. I spend a lot of money on my dog and my dog protects me. She's three years old and very obedient. And I love her and she loves me. It's a female. And I'm happy with her, but everybody needs to take care of their own animals and help each other take care of those animals. I can't have but one dog in the house. My dog is very protective of our property. And, but, Mr. Mayor, we need, we need a shelter. We need to educate the people in the community on what to do and how to do it. And I, I, I don't know where we need to go, but we need the, the leadership of putting it all together and get the finances to take care of it. I'm surprised. We need more than a hundred thousand dollars, I think, to put into this thing. I've, that's way too small of an amount. And we need some financing and people that'll work with this thing. So I, I don't have any definite questions exactly, except where do we go and what do we do?
Are you asking me? Go ahead, Mayor, sorry.
No, I mean, you might share with us. I mean, you've been all over the country and the world with these issues and you've seen if not as bad as this, you've seen similar situations. And do, do you want to answer that? I mean, how, I mean, the problem in a poor community, as you probably know, is the question of, you know, people or animals when you have you don't have unlimited resources. And as I tried to point out, it is a problem. It's also an economic development problem. It's, it's a lot of things. And I, I, we've had many, many citizens and most of them, I would say, live in, not all, but a lot of them live in poor areas. Attacked, viciously attacked by packs of wild or vicious animals. And so I'm not exactly sure what the question is, other than do you have any advice for us, I guess?
Well, I think finding a, a stable shelter environment for some animals, something with land where they can get a little exercise and then networking, and we can help you with all of that. I think we're all chomping at the bit and I know that there are, you know, all sorts of things you could do. Enforcement, law enforcement would be good, cruelty. Because you're picking up a lot of animals that have been treated unfairly. Backyard breeders, making sure that, you know, you have rules in place for the amount of animals in a, in a home. I know where I live, it's three. I'm, I have six, but I have two houses next to each other, so I feel like I could get, get away with that. But, you know, there, there are laws and, and things you have to abide by as a citizen. Tagging and making sure all dogs have rabies and they're up to date. It's pretty tough to enforce it. But making things available to the public at a low cost is really helpful. There are a lot of people who love their animals. They just can't afford the care. So making some of that available, we, we would be there with spay neuter. You know, there's, there's so much we could do to help you.
And, and I'll, I'll add, you know, this Bissell and his and I are approaching other funders to help us. At the end of the road on most of the, not all, but most of the law enforcement issues, you have to have a consequence if you don't follow the law. And the consequence of animal law is almost every, every time is we take them from you. Right? That's the end of the road. If you don't do what you're supposed to do, we take them from you. The problem with that is we haven't had a place to take them at all for at least two years. And we had some help, some help a little bit in, in beginning, but then leadership changed. And we didn't, we got no help the last two years. So when no place to take the animal, there's no way to enforce that law ultimately because that is the consequence of your action. You lose your animal. So the question is, how do we? Excuse me, how do we? How do we deal with that? And first is we gotta have a place to put them. And I know there's some conversation that has been about not having containment centers and shelters and so forth. That doesn't seem to be a very realistic option here. I don't know if you want to address that, but it's definitely not the law here. The law here is that we ultimately take them and hold them and you have a chance to get them back, but you have to pay for that privilege and get them vaccinated and so forth. And then you have to, you know, continue to be a good animal owner if you're in the city limits. But all of that is incumbent on having a place to take the animal. And we want a humane place. And it would be my goal, it'd be my wish, and I think not just mine, but a lot of people. We've had two major incidents in the last fifteen years that have shown, shown a really bad light on our community when it comes to this nationally. It would be pretty good if we could turn that around and make us a, a model community for animal control services. And use this as sort of energy to, we need to make it right. We tried to do that fifteen years ago. But we came full circle and I'm not wagging any fingers at anybody. But this, this is just trying to help. I think all of us just want to help. That's all. But we can't.
Mike, Mike Wheeler from Crowley, Arkansas. He has a good program. He's willing to help. We're willing to help. We have people that can come in to teach and get things set up properly. And honestly, you have some really great animal advocates right, right there already doing wonderful work like Leslie and, and Beth. And they're working hard to save lives humanely, taking care of these animals and networking them and getting them out. I mean, there are a lot of good people. When I was there visiting, it was heartwarming to, to see so many people who stand behind the pets in their community, who, you know, paid for our dinners and were happy we were there. They were all about the animals. And so I think, I think you would have a really wonderful resurgence to, to have a shelter that people could come and volunteer at and to be a part. It's a, it's a community thing. It's awareness. It's getting people at, you know, to the shelter to see the animals, to understand adoption and treatment and just taking care of it. Before we arrived, Mayor, when you were ready to shut the shelter down, it took us a couple of days to get there and you had a community outpouring from people everywhere in that shelter, taking care of these animals, walking them, feeding them. It was really, really wonderful to see. So you've got a great community of pet-loving people that I'm sure would also support a new facility and could be a fun engagement for your community, getting people together to make a difference.
Thank you again, Kathy, and thank you for all you've done for our community already. Thank you for your time tonight. I'm gonna open it up one more time if we have any questions from elected officials. Anybody wants to type anything, say hi to Kathy or thank you or anything else for that matter. We appreciate you and all your team. I feel like we went through battle together. I, it's, it, it was amazing to watch you in action and your whole team. And yeah, we had some local and regional people who came in and were real heroes. I mean, there's no other way to say it. Before you got here and then after, and continue to be and continue to want to be. We just need to try our best to harness that and leverage it into some permanent thing. So we're not here again fifteen years from now or ten years or a year from now or even a week from now, as far as I'm concerned. So any more questions from this? Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, just know that we're here to support you. We will be there to support you with the new facility. We will be there for your community to offer spay and neuter any way that we can, you know. If it's vouchers, whatever it is, we're hoping to have a vet that's able to come in. We would love to do that again for you. We know what's needed and, and we're here any way we can help. And we appreciate all of you. And actually, I'm kind of sad I'm not able to visit, but, you know, hopefully soon.
Well, we'll be through this and we'll take you up on that. Maybe, maybe you can help us christen a new facility that we can brag about all over the world.
That would be wonderful. I think we can help you raise money too. I think we can help you raise some money for it as well.
Any other questions for Miss Bissell? Will we?
I just let her, I would like to say thank you again, Miss Bissell, for helping in our community. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much. And we're gonna probably continue to talk about the animal control budget. You're welcome to stay on. But I mean, I respect your time. I want you to resume your life and we'll be calling on you again for sure. Don't worry.
Okay, good luck, everybody. Happy two thousand and twenty-two. Thank you. Thanks for all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Kathy. And, and also your assistant, Derek. So again, for those of you who might have missed it, a hundred thousand in animal control budget plus two full-time positions for animal control. Add, correct me if I'm wrong about that. Is that right? Derek?
Yes, sir. Yes, that's correct.
So that's not a lot. I agree with Mr. St. Columbia, but that's about a hundred thousand dollars more than we've had before. And if we can leverage that with grants and other funding, and we are a poor city and one of the things we're trying to do is prioritize that funding. I wish it could be a lot more. Maybe we'll get there someday if we can ever get to the point of enforcing some of these laws that include registration fees and fines and all that other stuff. We can, we can definitely cite people. The only problem is, at the end of the day, if you can't truly enforce the law by removing the animal from, from the, from the situation, it's very difficult to, to do anything. To do anything. I mean, I I know this from experience. And. A lot of the problems we have are not identifiable to individual. Owner, just animals running the streets. We implemented a spay and neuter program for strays. And I don't think it was large enough, but uh, I wrote a grant and got us a modest amount of money. And had a lot of volunteers and um. Doctor Pittman, our veterinarian locally, um, worked closely with us. But it's not enough. It's, it's not enough. So if all we did was deal with our strikes, that's all we did. And we didn't implement any, any other part of the laws that exist on the books, we would be overwhelmed. And that's with the facility. So. Uh, we have a long way to go, and all I would ask for the council to do is to, for the third year in a row, is to help us get started. That's my speech.
Mr. Mayor, I'll certainly support it. I'll back you a hundred percent on uh. That hundred thousand dollar budget that you provided there and uh. Anything else we can do to move forward on this, you have my support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, uh, Mr. Turner, I'm gonna turn it over to you. Uh, do we want to, or council members, anybody? Do we want to tackle anything else tonight? We're right at seven o'clock. Let's turn it over to you and let's you take it from here, sir. I think he's, he's still there. I think we, we may have lost him. We were also, in addition to animal control, I think we were talking about administrative services. We didn't have a lot to talk about there. So I don't believe it'll take a lot of time. And I don't see Mr. Turner, so we may have lost him. Bring you back on. There you go. Uh, Ms. Turner, our city treasurer. I'm gonna turn it back over to you if you want to do anything else tonight, or if you want to. Close it off for now, and then we're gonna convene again Thursday. Uh, I'm gonna leave that up to you, because you really are our master ceremonies for these budget meetings.
No, I mean, that, the presentation was a great presentation. Uh, I think the council has a lot to think about, and um. I I'd just like to leave it at that. I think that's probably enough for tonight.
I agree. Well, it's a lot of information. Um, I'm hoping that the presentation that uh we received will. We'll get a lot of uh play out in the community and talk about in. And among our elected officials as well, so. Any questions of Mr. Turner? All right, if not, we will pick up where we left off Thursday at six o'clock. Is that, is that right?
Yes.
This Ramsey? Right, so, uh, for those not, uh, to Mayor, we will have another budget meeting like this, only we won't have a special guest, but we. We'll go back to our normal format, which is uh just reviewing uh the budget for twenty-two. And we will start with the police department. All right, until then, if there are no, uh, again, it's not official meeting, it's just a budget workshop, so if there's no other. Business on the workshop to come for the meeting, let me thank our visitors again, a guest, and maybe anybody else who attended. And of course, Miss Bissel and her staff. Thank y'all very much, and y'all have a good evening.
Well, good evening.